Good job, buddy. Thank you so much.
Oh, it's because she did that, so.
Okay. So we are recording and I want to welcome everyone to our third town hall forum. We've got lots of great presentations to share with you from lots of different ministries today. Friendly reminder to please go ahead and mute yourselves while the presentations are happening. If you have questions for the presenters, you can stick those in the chat box.
She's showing the presentation.
You can put those in the chat and we'll have someone to read those to the presenters if there's time. Most of your questions, though, will be best saved for the small group discussions at the end of the presentation.
Speaker view.
Craig, yeah, you're muted. Okay, good.
You go to the next slide, Ann. Okay, next. The Lord be with you.
And also with you.
Let us pray. Almighty and ever-living God, ruler of all things in heaven and earth, hear our prayers for this parish family. Strengthen the faithful, arouse the careless, and restore the penitent. Grant us all things necessary for our common life and bring us all to be of one heart and mind within your holy church, who Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. All right, so this is a quick overview of our agenda for today. It's quite full and we're gonna move through as quickly and thoroughly as possible. We hope to have a good 15 minutes at the end for discussion. Reminder of our communication guidelines, we are still living in a time of crisis and our stress levels and anxiety are high for many people. So please be gentle with one another, use kind words, ask questions to seek understanding and clarification. Remember to use your I statements and always assume that everyone here is coming with good intentions. And of course, to think before you speak, are your words true, helpful, inspiring, necessary, and kind? All right, and now I'm very excited to hand the presentation over to our stewardship committee with Ruth Ann Meyer.
Can you hear me now?
There you are.
Okay, good. Thank you. So I've been working on the stewardship campaign for many, many years, since I came to the church 2005 and then shared it with Chris for a number of years. And of course, this year, it's a whole new ballgame. And I just feel, you know, right now, a lot of emotion and excitement and dread. So I think that kind of sums up the coronavirus. There's a quote by Rudie Roy who wrote, "Whatever it is, the coronavirus has made the mighty kneel and brought the world to a halt like nothing else could." Our minds are still racing back and forth, longing for a return to normality, trying to stitch our future to our past, and refusing to acknowledge the rupture. But the rupture exists, and in the middle of this terrible despair, it offers us a chance to rethink the doomsday machine we've built for ourselves. Nothing could be worse than a return to normality. And as I watched the worship service today, the one song that came to me and I remembered so much was "They'll Know That We Are Christians By Our Love." And I saw so much love in this service, in people participating and hearts and all of that. And now, as a stewardship group, it's really what do we do in the pandemic? What is being asked of us? And I think it's amazing as a congregation and I am so grateful for the calling committee and the vestry for bringing Reverend Jocelyn to us. Because what are we being called to do is to be the church, what we've always been, and we are the church. And we have been continuing to worship, to study, to pray, and that has been just amazing and heartfelt and just a gift from our rector and all of you who participate in those services, even my husband who did the finale or whatever today, the closing song. And, you know, the other things that we've done is we've continued to do the work of educating children, the food pantry. We've tried to model justice in how we treat our employees. We've continued to have the food pantry operating. All these things we've continued to do while we're in our houses fearing for our lives. And I think we are just soulful of fear on one hand, hope on another. And how do we come together in this stewardship season to do this? We're facing, we need to come together to teach, to learn, and to grow together and to discern what's going to happen. Historically, pandemics are a break with the past. They actually cause us to reimagine the future. And that's really what we're going to be called to do. Ann, can you go to the next slide? So one of the things that we've done at St. David's for many years is to read together and study together. And so creating sacred spaces is going to be the theme of how we look at our pandemic. You saw Pastor Jocelyn lit a candle today, and we're going to talk more about that candle. How do we make the connection with each other through this time when we are each in our own homes and not in church together? And, you know, that is what we're being called to do. Next slide. So this is going to be the all-purished book study. We are going to have our book discussions in coffee hour. And many of you have probably read Barbara Brown Taylor before. I think this book will really offer us a lot of insight and thought for discussion. If you miss a discussion, we're going to ask each group every week to send me a few themes of the week of your discussion so that we can continue to grow together as a community. Everything that we possibly can do to knit ourselves together, to keep the feeling going between us of support, of love, the support of our congregation. You know, we have done such an amazing job in stewardship in our church, but now it's a new age and it's hard, it's scary, and we have to let go of some of the past. And so however that comes, we will have to do that as a united prayerful group of people. And we have faced other things and you all have, before me, faced the fire. You know, we've built the, so we've built together and we now may need to tear down and rebuild. We don't know, but the most important thing is that we continue to hold hands together and move forward. And so in this stewardship season, you can go to the next slide. We want to read together. And if you want to have conversations or set up a group besides what we do on Sunday, we can talk about that, you know, as far as a book study. And we will, like I said, try to make this a conversation that helps us discern what we are being called to do. Because we will not go back to the way the world was, not at church, not in our community, not in our schools. No matter what, we're going to change. Next slide. So, Chris, do you want to say a little bit about the kickoff gift bags? Okay, I'll keep going. So, one of the joys of St. David's, and I know all of you feel this, is when we work on projects, we work with a group of people. And it is just amazing to me, the energy we get from working in these groups of people to do things and to bring things together. And it really, I always feel the Holy Spirit is in the room when I'm meeting. And so what we're doing this year is we're going to deliver to you a kickoff bag, which will have the materials you need to discern your pledge and to return it. And after prayerfully considering what you're able to do this year. But also, you will have a candle, like the one that Jocelyn lit, so that during the service, we can all light a candle and feel that as the Holy Spirit calling us to worship, sharing that worship experience, even though physically we're not together. Can you go to the next slide, Ann? So those bags will be delivered to your front porch. If you choose, when we knock on your door, we'd love to say hi, we'll wear our masks, we'd love to just touch base with you and think. And then what we want to do on consecration Sunday, which will be November 1st, is to have a parking lot drop-off and celebration. Our goal is 220,000. You know, we're stepping out in faith, we really don't know. But all of us know that, you know, the church must be supported and we all will give, I know, what we faithfully believe we can. I think that the New World Order, there's a few questions that we are gonna have to answer. And I think that they will really be part of this season of stewardship. What are we being called to do? What is the meaningful work that we are discovering in the time of pandemic that we need to do? How successful are we about engaging and sharing our story with each other in the community? What is being asked of us as a people of faith during this rupture in history? This is a historical time, and I think it's going to lead to so much greatness. You know, we all are crying in racial injustice and the economic inequity. And how do we, as St. David's, address that? One innovative mission in ministry are being inspired, what ministries need to be expanded? And then what do we have to leave behind in order to navigate this portal to a different future for our church, for our community, and our country? And then I think the one other thing that we need to keep in our heads and hearts is how do we nurture our pastors and our staff and our employees? How do we hold them in our heart and keep them going? Because we have the ability and the duty to make sure that we take care of the people that are in our employ. These are times that no one else, none of us have navigated. I'm 69, Katie Turley's probably, I don't know, I don't know, but much younger. And so for each of us, though, we have no roadmap. This is a new time. And so in this season of stewardship, it requires all of us to be creative and really to pray and follow the spirit of God and the Holy Spirit and the Scripture and discern what we're called to do. It's an easy time to despair, but I think what will cause us not to despair is to look to the future and really remember that, you know, it isn't us, it's God that will guide us and be with us as we walk through this month, these few weeks and months till November and then further. But really, I am so grateful, and I know Chris feels the same, for all the people that worked on the stewardship committee with us and for all of you who will participate in this campaign as we build this conversation about the future of St. David's. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ruth Ann. Our next presenter is Elaine Turnbull to talk about Sunday School.
Good morning, everyone. Sunday School is for pre-K through 5th grade, and then our youth group is for 6th grade through high school. Even with all that's going on, Leslie Cohen, Frances Warren, and I are stunned at how many kids have actually joined our group this year and very pleased. We actually started teaching Sunday School on September 13th by Zoom. It has been a real challenge for us to get up to speed on the technology, but we're working through it. Next slide, please. We start every lesson out with the liturgical calendar. We're using this this year to, because we're not meeting in person and we can't point out the colors of the altar and the banners and things that we use in church which normally isn't Sunday School use. So this helps us to remember and to retell the story of God's people and then the story of Jesus and when it happened. So here it's divided in half, and the colors help us to visualize the seasons. So all of the children have this. And what they will do is they'll add white stickers to the special events that come up. For example, a sticker will go up on November 1st, which is All Saints' Day. And our next slide. Meet the World Kids. Reverend Jocelyn recommended this program for us. And so each week, the children in the electionary Sunday School hear the gospel story. It's the same one that we're hearing in church. They watch a three-minute video featuring animated characters who encounter fun adventures and surprises as they meet up at their church and in their communities. Each episode is rooted in the day's theme and shows the kids living out faith in a wide range of situations. No matter what the challenge, the kids in the World videos are ready to show kids that a life in the church is a great place to meet, where they can explore the Bible and grow in faith. Prayer is done with hand motions, and lessons may include art projects. We meet from 10:00 to 10:25 each Sunday morning. And we use a breakout room so that there's a lesson for pre-K to second. And then our 3rd to 5th graders have a separate lesson and their videos a little bit more grown up. And the Zoom link is always on the weekly times. Our next video, please, our next slide. Our youth group, this is brand new, it's actually still in the formation, but this is where we're hoping to go. We're using a program, it's from Spark House, the same company that has the World program. But what we're going to do, since we have so few, 6th to 12th grade, only four, we're gonna be joining other youth groups. So Christ Church Coronado in St. Paul's has invited us to join. They meet on the first and third Tuesdays of the month from 7:30 to 8:30 in the evening. And then we're hoping to have a monthly in-person gathering. Right now, there's one set up for October and it'll be at Christ Church, it'll be social distancing. But meeting on Zoom on these Tuesday evenings really helps. Their videos are a lot of fun. And the other thing we hope to do going forward is service projects with other youth groups in the diocese, which is something our youth collaborative has done for a long time. The one last thing I want to mention is that you'll notice that each week, one of our youths will be reading. And that's, believe it or not, 3rd grade to senior high school. If they're willing to read, they take turns and they're on their reading schedule. Thank you very much. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Elaine. As a mom, I'm so grateful to Elaine and Leslie and Frances for taking on the technology and providing this ministry to our children and youth. So thank you. All right, our amazing youth music director is up next, John Mark.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Do you can hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Okay. I'm just speaking very briefly today, everybody. I have one image to show you. This is the equipment that the church has purchased that I'm using for the services now. I just thought you might like to see that. I want to thank everyone. I have two thanks, and one is for all the kind words. And I want to mirror and reflect what I've already heard from the other two presentations. It's just delightful that people are so enthusiastic as they are and help out and just give kind words. And I'm just always delighted when the music turns out good and people love it. And I think that's just wonderful, and I appreciate all of that kind words. And I also appreciate the contributions of others. And I have to say, I do a lot of stuff here and it looks like it's all coming from me, but there's a lot of people actually involved in this and the creation of this. So even sometimes when it sounds or looks like the music is just coming from me, it's not. It's unbelievable and it's just so, it's been a lot of fun, actually, in a lot of ways, to work with people in different ways and figure out how to put this together. I have a weekly meeting with Pastor Jocelyn and we have, it's really quite great. I've been working with her, talking about how to work with the preschool, how to work with the Sunday School. And we've been planning, we've been planning, we've got quite a bit of plans all the way through Advent, and we're even talking about Christmas at this point. So that's really exciting to be looking so forward in the future. We're having choir practice, and as you can hear, we've got more people contributing to the singing and to the playing of instruments. And I hope if anybody would like to somehow contribute to the music on the worship service, let me know. The picture, again, is some equipment that the vestry decided that I needed, and we bought it for the church. And so there's a great contribution there. And I just want to say one final thing, we had that Bandcamp sale last month. I don't have time to make a new album, but they're gonna have another sale. So if you missed out last time on buying the piano album that I put up there, you have another chance this Friday. And they're also, so it's another sale where they're not doing the revenue sharing. What that means is your contribution goes up again over 10% because they take some money, but when these sales happen, they don't, they don't share the revenue, they share it all with us. So your contribution goes up by more than 10%. So if you missed out, check out the Bandcamp site again on Friday. And thank you, everybody, once again. I don't have much else to say, except to answer questions, so I look forward to that. Thank you again, everybody.
Excellent. Thank you so much, John Mark. We put the link to that Bandcamp site in the chat. So if you haven't had a chance to bookmark it, go ahead and click on it and save it in your browser so that next week, I believe, when that sale happens, you'll be all ready to jump on in, buy some great music. Download some great music. All right, we're up to our outreach presentation from Debbie Parker, Outreach Chair and Vestry member.
Thank you, Jocelyn, and hi, everybody. The outreach update is basically a food pantry update. Our pantry has remained open throughout the pandemic. Every Sunday from 10:30 to 12:45, they made some initial adjustments to meeting San Diego and COVID guidelines for safety and health. But last month, we went to an all-outdoors-in-the-fresh-air-food-distribution setup. So with Pastor Jocelyn getting a grant from the diocese to enable us to purchase portable tables and shade canopies, we set up the distribution outside and all of the food is out there. This has made it possible for clients to move through more quickly, but with physical distancing. And it's, the new model is working extremely well. We are able to serve over 100 families each Sunday, that's about 400 people. And the really wonderful thing about our, you can see some coolers in the distance there. We have maybe eight coolers. And we get donations from various grocery stores of a lot of meat, deli, and dairy, along with produce and dry goods. But we have quite an array of food to give out. And as I've been there helping to monitor on previous Sundays, I am so touched by our clients. We have a diverse group of Eastern Europeans, Asian Americans, Hispanics, Arab Caucasians, elderly and physically challenged who come through. They are so appreciative, they've been so patient and kind during all of the changes that have been made. So I even find that some of them are bringing things to share with other people. And some of the clients are, after they put their food in their car, they come back and help other people get their boxes to the car. So it's really quite a lovely community. And we're doing our best to reduce the strain on the utilities. Our grant allowed us to purchase two new refrigerator freezers, which we hope will save electricity. And we're trying to reduce the number of pickups so that we aren't using the ed center as much. But the other thing is, we may be able to reduce one of our trash collections to make it just once a week, along with once a week of recycling. So the only other thing I would say on the last one is, we could use more volunteers, especially if you know people in your neighborhood, some young, strong people that might want to come out and help with our setup or cleanup, and others that might just enjoy, some of your neighbors that aren't as young, that might enjoy helping to get the food into the boxes for the clients. So there's, come see what it's like. Of course, you'd have to watch the church service later in the day. I've been doing that, and it's nice, too. So contact Linda if you want to help volunteer, and thank you all very much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Debbie. We're really, really proud of these outreach ministries that are happening during this time of pandemic. Speaking of pandemic, we now have an update from our Regather Task Force by Kathleen Hoots. Now, Kathleen, please take it away.
Hello, everybody. Put your thumb up if you can hear me. Thumbs up, can you hear me? Yes. Okay, so I know that we're running a little bit behind schedule, but that's okay. So this first slide is showing everybody that is just on the task force. And Ann is circling the names of that right now, so just, so next slide, please, Ann. This is something that we have covered before in a previous meeting and all the things that we have done and completed. We've read all the articles and are keeping up to date on everything that's going on around the country to consider where we need to go. So, next slide, please, Ann. So, this is our work as a task force. You can see all the points on there. We talk about being able to sing and vigorous speech and the length of the services and how we recirculate the air. Singing and praying out loud together are not safe. Outdoor gatherings are the safest, but still have to limit the amount of time together and maintain physical distance and masks. Next slide. Here's our plan. Right now, we're working on, several people have been trained to be lay-ucharistic visitors, otherwise known as LEV, and groups of, where groups of people can gather in people's backyards once a month. And you can see that there's, we're looking for people that will be of similar age and risk assessment, wear a mask, say morning or evening prayer, depending on what time of day the group decides to meet. Those groups, once they're formed, will keep the same people in them, we won't switch groups up. And that's the safest way for us to proceed. And then there'll be waivers that will be signed. Contact information shared with the Contact information shared with the church office in case anybody gets sick and we need to contact the group. So that's another reason for keeping the groups cohesive. So right now, you got an email earlier this week, and we want you to sign up. There it is, right there. There's the email. So if you haven't checked your email, do so and sign up to join a small group. There's a link right on the, on the email to sign up. And then we'll, once the task force meets again, we will determine who's going to be in what groups. Is there another slide, Anne? Just that one. Oh, there's one more. I knew there was another one. So if you prefer not to attend a small group, but would like to receive communion, you just have to let Pastor Jocelyn know, and we'll arrange for a porch visit. So if you feel like you're higher, at a higher risk, then those arrangements can be made. And that's all I have. And if you guys have any questions, we'll address them in the small groups. Okay?
Excellent. Yes, thank you so much. Kathleen, all of your small group discussion groups will have one vestry member and one Regather Task Force member. So everyone will be able to ask questions about this, this plan during your small group discussion. All right. Our preschool director extraordinaire Karen Garcia is here to give us an update on the preschool.
Good morning, everyone. September marks the 30th anniversary of St. David's Preschool. Is it as I imagined it would be? No. However, we are moving forward and learning to live in community during these COVID times. We will continue the mission envisioned by Anne Packard and the St. David's Parish of providing excellent Christ-filled early childhood care and education. Our fall session started on August 31st. We currently have three learning groups serving a total of 36 children with an average daily attendance of 26 to 30 children. We're using two rooms of the Mission Center for two- to four-year-olds. And we also started Preschool Chapel last week on Wednesdays, and it's going to be via Zoom. Next slide, please. Now, during the pandemic, it became very clear that public schools said they were going to implement distance learning here in our county. And we discerned that there, that we could meet a need that families have. Parents needed help ensuring that their children could log on and participate in their online learning through schools. We are currently serving seven different children in their distant learning programs at three different schools. We also serve three additional children in kindergarten for afternoon enrichment, and we serve a total of 10 children via that program. And there's Stephanie and Cindy working with the little kids on their computers with their earphones. It's been lovely. Lots of challenges for Stephanie and Cindy, but they're doing a great job with very little time to get used to the software and such that the children are using. Guidelines and recommendations, oh my goodness, so many different ones from some organizations. And recommendations increase the operating expenses of any school across the board. We're limited, we have to keep our groups separate. We're limited in the number of children that we can have in each group, both daily and over the course of a week. We're limited by the number of staff that can interact with each group. So we can't use that floating teacher to go back and forth between groups. Basically, we need to have two teachers per learning group, which of course increases cost of operation. We have increased cleaning and sanitizing protocols. Most people never knew that preschool teachers use PPE. We have all the time. However, all the costs of those supplies have gone up, as well as the times that when we need to use them has increased. So go ahead and go to next slide. So those are some of the cost factors behind it. Fiscal outlook, the Paycheck Protection Program did help both the church and preschool, especially while the preschool was in the reopening mode and while we began our summer program. Through the course of our summer, several families withdrew their children due to concerns around the increasing COVID-19 cases. So we did have a deficit of $14,000 in August, and we anticipate a deficit of about $8,000 for September. The good news is, is we are slated to receive some grants. One we received already for about $3,000, that state funding for PPE and cleaning supplies, as well as the county has earmarked $25 million specifically for childcare programs. And we should expect that dispersal in November, we're allocated to receive about $9,000. And while we do have a waitlist of 12 children at this time, most of them are too young to enter our program, and we can expect to see them after the new calendar year, moving into the spring and summer. So for us to mitigate future deficits, what we must do is focus on adding that fourth learning group and recruitment of new families who need the services we have to offer right now. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So what my plans around that include, we will produce a virtual video tour that when a family expresses interest in our program, I can send them the link to that tour. And that's to minimize the number of people on campus, as well as we will enlist current parents to help them inform other young families of our programs and services. During the course of the pandemic, I've also identified a need for tuition assistance. In the past, the preschool has had a line item budget associated with tuition assistance. Because of needing to shore up our funds, we have stopped using that. So what I have ascertained is we do have several families that could benefit from short-term assistance, and that would be approximately $400 per month, or a total of $1,600 for the remainder of 2020. If anyone would like to be a tuition angel, please contact me. We'll also be letting the preschool families know that this is a need and hoping that some of them can support. But I'm hoping that we can all come together to support our existing families that we've been serving, some of them for several years, to help them through this immediate short-term financial crisis that they're experiencing. If anyone has any questions or concerns about the preschool, please enter your comments in the chat or feel free to contact me directly via email. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Karen. I know that you worked so hard to get the preschool back open again and to meet these recruiting goals. So we're really grateful for all of your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you for all your support. I must say, when I talk with other preschool directors, I just always feel so blessed by the amount of support that I receive, both from you Pastor Jocelyn and the vestry as a whole, particularly the finance committee. Thank you so much.
We're blessed to have you in our midst. All right, so now we are up to the treasurer's update with our, our amazing treasurer, Jane Krikorian.
Great. I believe I can still say good morning to everybody just about, and welcome to the PowerPoint presentation. And again, I'm Jane Krikorian, your treasurer. We're going to go through, I have about 10 slides. Some will rest on a little longer than others as I kind of explain things, but all in the name of getting everybody up to date where we are financially. Next slide, Anne, please. All right, you can just go through, and we'll hit our accomplishments. Of course, we have this incredible online worship service every Sunday. Keeps getting better, better. Like John Mark said, the music, I'm just finding more beautiful, more complex. Kudos to all of us for continuing all this. We continue working with the new model preschool. You just heard from Karen about that. Continue working with the food pantry to find a more efficient model and way of doing things. You heard from Debbie about that. So those are things to be happy about. And next slide, Anne, thank you. Some comparisons. So when we look back, you can see where we were this time last year. So in a pretty nice surplus period, when you look back, if you recall, seems like a lifetime ago, Father Mike was still with us. And if you remember, he was a three-quarter time priest, and we also did not pay healthcare for him. So of course, we would expect to see a more positive net income in that type of a situation. And if you keep going through, we'll catch up with ourselves August 2020. We're going to see our income. You see, it's dropped a little bit year-to-date, expenses up a bit. Well, the next slide will go a little through more detail, but where we are, just about a negative 2,000. Again, I find it quite amazing, and that's why I like putting these presentations together, because sometimes these numbers pop out and I sort of go, wow. So that, that's good, good for the church. Next slide. So we wanted to put together a graph that could kind of help everybody see where your pledges, where everything goes in a month and a year. So if you look, I've compared year-to-date, August 2019 for the church, and then August 2020. And what this pie chart is breaking down for you is our expense categories. So you can see on your left side, you're going to see salaries and wages, and this includes healthcare and pension. And you heard Roseanne take, talk about caring for our staff, and this is where we care for them. And I think what I'll do is I'll go through each category and we'll sort of compare to what happened then the next year. You'll see a little, when you go to 2020 and you look at that same category, you see a bit of a drop. If you recall, in 2020, we were not paying a priest, January, February, March, and April. We just had a supply priest. So that's going to shrink that little piece of the pie there. The next category is our outward ministries. This includes things like our common life share to the diocese, some of our food pantry expenses, senior center, parish pastoral needs expense. That too shrunk a little bit, you can see, year over year. And one of the big reasons is the diocese granted us a three-month reprieve from our common life share. That all came about back in March, as we were all just, you know, heads on fire, trying to work our way through this. But that was a real big generous gift to us, because that reduced that expense category by over $9,000. So that was a very generous gift from the, from the diocese. Next is our internal ministries. This includes things like advertising and communications, youth and child ministry expenses. That's like their snacks and things, childcare expenses on Sunday. That also has decreased because we're not gathering. So those expenses kind of went down. The next category is worship and music. Yeah, the purple. And that includes things like altar guild expense, bulletin and lectionaries, flowers. And again, gone down because we're not gathering. So you can see where we've saved on some expenses, right, because of not being able to gather together. The next category is our administration. That stayed about the same year over year. And in that category, you're going to see things like our liability and property insurance, telephone service, internet, office supplies, postage, property tax. I did want to bring that up. We did have to do a catch-up payment just this past month to the county for the rectory, because when we have renters there, we go back to paying property tax on it. So we're up to date. Thank you. Shout out to Craig Winder on that, who always does our little tax investigations. So yeah, we're all caught up on that. And then the last one is our building and property, and you'll see quite a jump there. And indeed, it jumped, it doubled from year over year, 40,000 to 80,000, I believe. So if you recall, at our annual meeting, which seems, again, a lifetime ago, it was only in February, we kicked off our caring for our campus program. And that's where we, we had, result of the property assessment that was done in April of 2019, identifying about $230,000 worth of repairs and maintenance and upgrades and that we needed to address over the next 24 months. And we had started doing that. We have put a new roof on the admin building. We trimmed some trees and removed them that were damaging our foundation. We replaced them electrical doors that were damaged. That all came to a screeching halt, as I call the pandemic pivot. And so we sort of backed off all that stuff and then had to start to look at what we needed to do to move forward. So, so that's the pie chart. Next slide. So now we're going to compare where we are as a church and preschool together, year over year. You can see last year, we were in a pretty good net surplus place, and you're going to see this year, a scary figure. It's coming up. That's a negative $111,000. And if you look at the income lines, year over year, you see quite a big drop in income. Now, if you remember, the church income drop was about $30,000. So a large income drop came from our preschool. So when you think back to March of 2020, we closed the preschool. We put Trina and Karen and John Mark on 50%. All our teachers were furloughed. We continued to pay everybody's healthcare. And so I really liked what Roseanne had to say in the beginning, her remarks about, again, caring for our people. And we, everybody should pat yourselves on the back for that, because that was a big commitment on our part to keep doing that. So there was no preschool income at all for April, May, and June. So that's why you're going to see that big drop. And even though we brought teachers back in May, we didn't open the preschool until July. So that kind of explains that big kind of drop in income. Expenses dropped just a bit, and you saw where, but we did spend a lot on the building and property. And some of that was, a lot of that was to get the preschool ready, the big playground update, Mission Center locks, the new floors downstairs, all, which are gorgeous, by the way, if people haven't dropped by to poke their head and see it out, which you'd have to ask permission. But anyways, so big negative number. How can we survive this negative number? Well, you heard Karen bring up the paycheck protection money. So, oh yeah, someone reminded me the parking lot repaving was part of our improvement. So we're looking at this big scary number, 111,000 in the red. But if you recall, we, in May, we secured the paycheck protection money for $108,396. And when you apply that to that big negative number, you come up with only $2,633 for the year, for the church and preschool. So that's pretty amazing. So when you're reading all of these, you know, business closures, business struggling, we've got through this six months, and here's where we are. And the next slide is going to show us even more the result of, of a lot of scary and painful decisions, but where it's brought it, brought us to, to this day. And I know I'm way beyond five minutes. We added some slides yesterday, but we're getting, we're getting through it. We're getting to the last few slides. So this is our cash graph. This shows us what we have in the bank, what we started with the year. And you can see in January, we started with $94,000, and where we are now, we're at almost $93,000 at the end of August. So through all these painful months, here we've come to this figure. And I, again, want to just thank everybody for their hard work to get us here. And we really need to be thankful and happy about where we are. Now, where we're going, as I really liked, again, Roseanne's remarks in the beginning, is, is difficult. And we're going to have to do a lot of prayer and discernment, because we don't want that line to continue to go down. Because that's what, what that will indicate to us is that we're spending more than we're bringing in. So that's our challenge. So I think we can go to the next slide. Yes, and of course, the challenge of the, of if we have monthly deficits, and it's, and it's showing that we're spending too much, we have to, we have to cure that, let's say. Because right now, we still have Pastor Jocelyn at her, what we call her Sacramento salary of $65,000 plus healthcare plus her pension. And due to the pandemic and the uncertainty, her relocation date is still uncertain. But the blessing in disguise there is that gives us a bit of time to try and build ourselves back up. So we need to be able to support her at what we lovingly call her San Diego salary of $8,000 plus healthcare and pension. So again, that's our challenge. Next slide. You can just go through these. So just looking ahead, this is, I think, just a review of what we've already said. We're working with the preschool, working with the food pantry, looking for other revenue opportunities. Can go on to the next slide. If you haven't seen, the cell tower construction has begun. We've been waiting for this for a long time. They're going to tear down the old cell tower. If you can go to the next slide, Ann. On the left, you see, that's the temporary pole. All of the equipment's going to be put there. They're going to rebuild the new tower and then put in new T-Mobile equipment and new Verizon equipment. One of the things that this, the opportunity this brings for us is to sell this income stream, much like we did with T-Mobile several years ago when we paid off our mortgage. We do have a bit of a conundrum in that when we paid off our mortgage, we were paying about $5,600 a month. We lose the $3,000 that's coming in regularly and certainly every month. That time was good because we were still $2,600 ahead, you know, on that little exchange there. However, if we were to sell now, we would lose $3,000. And then we'd have to figure out how to protect and preserve that lump sum, but also cure the deficit. So I know that's hard to sum up in such a short time, but that's a conundrum for us. That's where we need to discern and pray. And how can you help? Keep coming to the online services. Keep, your pledges are coming in wonderfully. We're 10,000 ahead on pledges right now. Miscellaneous donations have come in. And so everybody is really supporting this church and this preschool and this food pantry and our ministries and Pastor Jocelyn. So if we can just keep up with the good work, we'll get through this together. So pray, pray, pray for God's discernment going forward. And that's it. And thank you. I know I took up a lot of time there, but thank you very much.
Yes, now this is all very important and complicated information that you shared. And so thank you for doing that so clearly and concisely. Once again, we will have opportunity to discuss this in just a few more minutes. But I do have a few things I'd like to share with you before we go off to discussion groups. I've been reflecting a lot on where we are right now at the church. And it struck me that what feels like a really new and strange way of doing our worship and ministries together is actually an ancient way of doing our worship and ministries together. We're in a global pandemic, and I'm stuck 500 miles away from you. But we actually have a great precedent for this in a guy named St. Paul. He also managed to minister and lead churches in other countries. And he communicated with them through letters, which took months, we believe, to get to them and the responses to get back to him. We, on the other hand, have the internet. So we're actually in a much better place communication-wise. But we see through the epistles, it was hard, right? And that communication was so important. But I think it's just a reminder that we're not the first ones to be in this position. We're not the first ones to be trying to live out our faith in this way. Likewise, the early Christians gathered together for worship in homes because it wasn't safe for them to meet publicly. It was dangerous. They could have died. And we called those house churches. Now likewise, our scientific and medical experts tell us it's not safe for us to gather in public once again. And so we're looking towards that similar model of gathering in small groups in people's homes. And I just, I'm so moved and encouraged by wondering what spiritual opportunities is God offering to us? You know, this is where our church started, in these kind of small intimate settings. You know, there might be something really beautiful for us in this time and in this model. So again, it feels like new and different, but actually, it's a very ancient way to gather. And so I guess I just want to encourage us to know that we're not the first to have to do things the way that we're doing it. Christians have done this before. But also, this is the church of the future. And so whatever we do now is going to lead us into new opportunities and new models of ministry. So while we feel like things are unprecedented and everything is upside down, and we don't know what to do, we've got these great historical guides for us, and we're not alone. Christians have been here before. They got through it, grew closer to God and each other, and we will too. I truly believe that. I want to share with you an update on my listening campaign. Today, I've met with 71 people for a half an hour or more, which is amazing. I've loved every minute of this. I've got about 30 some odd people still to talk to. So I'd love to get those conversations done in the coming months and have some time to reflect on my notes and share with you what I've heard. It's been such a blessing to me to get to know each of you and to hear why St. David's is important to you. That goes with our stewardship theme of, you know, why you come to St. David's and why this place is important. And what is very clear to me is that it is, that this church community is truly special, is truly doing God's ministry, and loves Jesus and loves our neighbors. And so I'm really excited to share some of what I've heard from all of you. Closing thoughts. Yeah, please be of good courage. These are challenging times. And I know God is calling us to something, something new, something different. We just have to find what it is. We can be brave. We can do hard things. We can protect each other, and we can love our neighbors. And, you know, while people say things are closed, the truth is, our ministry continues. It has never stopped. Our worship continues. It has never stopped. And St. David's will continue. So, all of that being said, we are right at 12:15, which is when we had hoped to be wrapping up. But it's totally fine, because these are all important things to share with you all. I have the breakout room set up, and I would like each group to start by considering the question, what is God calling St. David's Church, the entire community, to do right now? What is God calling St. David's Church to do right now? I'm going to ask our vestry and regather task force members to take some notes to share as a group after the meeting. But also, if you have questions that came up through the presentation, this is the time to ask those. Okay, so let's talk for about 15 minutes. You'll get a one-minute countdown before the rooms close, and then we'll come back for a closing prayer. All right, here comes your breakout room invitation. And we'll see y'all in a little bit. Go back to recording.
Debbie should be our spokesperson.
Yeah, would you like, yeah, there we go. Oh, I guess I didn't write a prayer, so I'll just say a prayer. Gracious and loving God, thank you for this incredible church of St. David's and the people that are in it and the leaders that you've called to serve. Be with us as we continue to pray.